For coming, this is General Fund Budget Workshop. So, I want to kind of go over my plan, agenda. So, we'll first, obviously, look at the General Fund budget, get some highlights. Obviously, have a lot of time for questions. Then, we'll talk a little bit about the Item 3 there, list of cuts to the General Fund, to how we got the balance. But then, I'd like to go back to 2, because there's a, I want to talk specifically in the budget book about our draft cash reserve policy and make a proposal on kind of how we move forward into 2026 and that. So, if that's okay, you guys, I will roll it out. And then, we'll talk a little bit about the .gov transition, which is a whole lot of information, except for, we're trying to figure it out. New law, trying to figure it out, okay. All right, so first, you got there in your packet, our General Fund budget. For those of you that are new to City Finances, we're mostly funded in the city by sales tax, about 40%, and 1% of that is General Fund, which means it's not designated to any specific department, and then, the other 2 pennies, the other 2% is all designated. So, you'll kind of see that as we walk, go through here. So, to get balance, we've been very, very conservative this year on revenues and expenses. We really, Julie dug in, we, everybody kind of did their usual thing and put in their requests, we kind of, Julie dug in the, really, actual expenses, to try to keep the, keep our expenses as flat as possible going to 26, because there is a lot of discussion about what is the economy going to do, and uncertainty, so we're really trying to be conservative. We did put in 2% growth in our revenues, which we feel like is, is, we'll hit, I think we'll hit that this year, I think we'll hit that next year, but I wanted you guys to know that we've, we've been very cautious and conservative in this budget. So, first, though, you got your HR Finance, IT, elected officials. Not a lot of change, again, although this, most of our budget is payroll, that'll be, you see, your largest expense, and we do always budget for full staff throughout the year, but we also then have vacancy rates, so that's one of the reasons you can see the increase in our payroll, is throughout '25, our employees got raises, and so, you, our payroll grow, grew into '26, but not any new, we don't, we're not proposing any new positions from '26. So, that's, the growth in the, in the payroll is just from your usual, last year, we did 2% COLA, and we also allow for that 3%, up to 3% on your performance level. Intergovernmental transfers, that's our sales tax. And then, your property tax there, 1.6 million, that's, obviously, that comes in, a lot, that comes into the General Fund here, but then is divvied out, okay, you'll see that for the rest of it. Fire Department. That intergovernmental transfer is, that's their designated tax. Public Safety slash Courts. Sorry, I didn't mean to skip PD, I forgot there, front and back.
We're good.
My bad, sorry. Forgot it was front and back. Again, I always try to point this out, the, you notice there, the governmental transfer, PD, 1.7 million, they get less designated tax than fire, so you, you see that, some, wow, that's such a big gap in their revenue. Any questions so far? No, two guys, I'm just slowing down. Real control. Parks and Rec. You always notice there, we do, Parks and Rec does a good job of bringing in. Self-generated revenue, always a bit better than the national average. Impressive, no, of course.
I met with Joy earlier, we, we missed, there was some discussion on how we wanted to, whether we wanted to change kind of how we labeled these, but I will tell you, it is the same as it was for 2025, there's no change in personnel. So, if you want to fill that in, it is 2 for admin, 9.5 for parks, 17.5 for recreation. The .5 is the part, the full-time equivalent of part-time employees, so that's not, that's not an individual that is split half and half, that is, we do include our, all of our part-timers in as full-time employees, so. And then, the part-time that's labeled there next to recreation, that is because from 2021 to 2024, that line was only part-time, Parks and Rec were merged together, so that's why we're looking at possibly re-breaking that down in a different way, so.
Person.
Hey, I was gonna.
You said the same, that culture, the same, there was one.
Yep. That's the principle, you're having a book.
Now, we actually have a camera director. Oh.
Yeah, that should be at 7, we're playing it out there.
Thank you. Any questions? See there, the total. All right, let's look at, I don't know if we, I don't know if it's in the handout, it's on the agenda, the, how we got there, the list of cuts. So, we, you know, we applied for the grant for four, four police officers, and unfortunately, that would be 150K, took that out, because we don't know if we're going to get that. Planning asked for an additional employee, we're going to hold off on that, I do think we've got more and more growth, and we get to have another code enforcement officer. We do need another fire marshal at some point, and then, the 2% COLA, cost of living adjustment, we took out. Repair maintenance, Paul Bishop, and then, service and repair apparatus, fire, and the city clerk expenses. I put all those out, because as usual, we'll go throughout the year, if we see economy doing better than, better than we thought, something changes, we would always, those kind of prioritizing, trying to add back in if possible, so we'll just keep, keep track on those. And then, you'll see in the blue highlighted, those are capital expenses that we pulled out of operations, and we will have those on the December agenda separate, so it's very clear that that will be what we're taking out of cash reserves.
I did want to point out, there's one of those that's different, and that's the principal and interest on the 2024 fire truck loan. Typically, we do include those, because we don't have an option on them, so if you, for some reason, that night, you didn't, you have to approve that, because we're legally, contractually obligated to pay that. I did, did feel like we could pull it out in this instance, because it is a five-year asset or more, and it's, we did it aggressively over only three years instead of the five years, and so, but if any of you guys have any issues with that, let me know, but it is different than the other ones, which are just tru- truly optional.
Do you know what the total is for the optional ones, off the top of your head? I just wrote, I can calculate.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can do it real quick.
No.
No, I don't, I won't.
And do you know what potential impact that would be on days of cash?
This, this list, before I added, let's see, well, if you, if you take off the things that we're not planning to ask you guys that night, so obviously, we're not going to ask for the cops hiring, we're not going to ask for the planning addition, all those ones he went over, I think the total is 1.7 million, and it would be 30 days. So, it wouldn't take us below the 120 days, because we're right now somewhere between 180 and 170, but it would be a hit. It's a pretty good hit, but know too, that like, on the principal and the interest payments, we do those monthly, so it'll go all year long, and several of these are not going to happen, like, they're going to take a lot of time, so it's not like it would be a hit all at once, and if we decided, you know, like I said, you can put some of those on hold when you wanted to. We're not going to ask to add back the repair and maintenance at this time, or the service and repair apparatus, or the city clerk, just, just those ones, and the only ones that are not optional are, like I said, the principal and interest. So, if you chose, like, for instance, that night, you could do an amendment to what I'm going to bring to you, and take off anything other than those two.
Tough question, so the cop hiring grant, is the grant still parting with you to the system?
It is, actually, and we're waiting, they were supposed to tell us something sometime in September slash October, and so, we haven't heard any, I asked Rebecca just today, and we haven't heard any, so.
We go to shut down, so.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
That's kind of.
We did go to a different grant.
Yes.
You did.
Yes.
They, they, they spoke a little bit longer, and then, law enforcement, Middle Hill Association grants, for just under $200,000 to hire a counselor slash therapist.
And it requires no match, no match at all.
100% funded.
100% funded, sorry.
We need to have a Rebecca monologue here.
Every one. All right, does that make sense, what we'll be coming back with, as far as the capital improvement list?
Uh, sir. That would have burned up the COLA, I just honestly, that's, that's kind of like, that's kind of putting us kind of back on that egg wall.
Yes, I know, I feel that with you.
Agreed.
It was a difficult budget this year, it was really difficult. I mean, I would have liked to have kept in the COLA and the principal and interest on that fire truck, but I mean, we'd have been looking for another million dollars, and the 2% that we added in for sales tax, which the states, for the first six months of the year, the state's doing 1.8, so I don't feel like we're totally crazy there in 2%, but it only adds $156,000, so it's, it wouldn't cover, so.
But like I said, you know, this is, our job is to give you a balanced budget, and then, as we get into the year, we prioritize what we want to add back, and why would she be on that list? We've done that before.
We've done it mid-year.
Did you get the optional dollar or not?
Uh, I did, it was 1.72. That's all of it, so that's not, so that, that does include the fire truck loan.
So, you didn't?
I did include that. Because we know we have to pay that, period. 170,000, I put here without, for the items in both, not fire truck loans. How many, how much is it for the?
Uh.
48? Well, use a pack here, I don't know where.
Oh, oh, hang on, I'll add that. I know what you're talking about, yeah. No, you know I don't have it, I didn't bring it in here with me, but I can, I can get that back, you guys.
I was just trying.
I thought I brought everything.
All right, let's move on and talk a little bit about the budget book, I want to talk about our cash reserve policy, and then, I'll hand it over to Joy, she's got a few things she wants to talk about. If you've got, you got, page 23 on the budget book is our draft cash reserve policy that we've been tracking this year, and this will have an impact on that discussion as far as days in cash, if we start to, if we adopt this policy, it'll definitely change the way it's, we look at our cash reserves. So, as you know, we've been looking at different buckets, five buckets, a contingency reserve that's basically a million dollars set aside for catastrophic emergency, an operating reserve, 90 days payroll, that is specifically there for a major recession, or some instance where we have to dip into that to make sure we can continue to pay our employees, a capital reserve that would be tied to capital improvement plan, a grant reserve, and then, the debt reserve, which is a year's worth of principal and interest. And what I would like to propose, and I'll bring it back in the next draft of the budget book, if you're amenable, is that we start off in '26 by just doing the contingency reserve, a million dollars, the operating reserve, which is, would be 90 days payroll, and the debt reserve. And the logic behind that, and where we're, what I'm thinking is, the capital improvement plan isn't ready, so right now, we just have $2 billion earmarked for that, and I don't want to, I don't want to adopt this policy until that's done. And I don't want to, I don't want to adopt this policy until that's done. Adopt this policy fully until that's done and we know exactly what that money's purpose is. And then the grant reserves, I, we're still learning, Rebecca's doing a great job. We may want to lean into that. And then also with things in the federal government right now, we're not sure. So I don't feel confident about our plan with those two buckets yet. And then I felt like maybe this would be, it's good just to take an initial step of just saying, okay, we're going to do these three buckets. And then have on here, you know, we're also looking at these two. But only enact the first three that I mentioned. That also, I think, allows us, because of those, the contingency reserve, the operating reserve, and the debt reserve, that's money that's not going to be touched unless we're in serious dire straits. And with a potential, and a new banking partner coming on board, maybe. I'd like that to be able to, in their hands, see if we can't use that, leverage that to maybe grow that every year revenue off of that, maybe cover like a COLA. Because it's, is such a, it won't be touched unless we're, you know, real. I can't, I've looked at all the records, I, I can't see a time where the city's been in that much trouble that would have to dip into that. I think it's smart to have it, but I also want to put it to work. And so that, that's, I can get you, we'll have firmer numbers on that. Last month, I think the 90 days was, was it 3.7 on General Fund million? And then the debt, which some of that debt reserve is tricky because some of it you have to have by law. We're kind of going above that. So we're probably talking between four and six million that we're saying as a city, look, this is set aside, unless we're, it's Armageddon. So that we can, with a partner, begin to say, hey, how can we, how can we leverage this and use this to earn, earn money? So I'd like to bring that back to you in the second draft of the budget book. I don't want to just look at it, this draft another year, but I don't think we're ready to adopt all of them. All right, Joy, what else you got in the budget book?
Well, I went, I just went through my usual and if y'all wanted to jot down some page numbers for our highlights, like page 29 is where I calculated the 156,000 based off sales tax through August. So if you're interested in that calculation and how it affects each, you know, number and different stuff. Page 45 is the full-time equivalent and I, I did actually work some more on that today. There was, so I'm going to pass, I'm just passing down. Those are two corrected full-time equivalent pages. And that was just kind of tweaking that. Page 48 and 57 are actually new charts that we added this year. You know, one of them was based off of Scott Staple's suggestion, something he had seen at another city where it looks at your full-time equivalents based off of like program, programming. So it's kind of a neat thing right now, it's got the 25 dumper's in it, but I would of course replace those with the 26 whenever we, you know, get to that point. But you might check out that chart just because it's new. And then page 57 is also new and that, I'm working with our, our contractor, Pinnacle IT and Philip to do a list by devices of our cell phones, our desk phones, our laptops, our computer, desktops. Just kind of an overview by full-time equivalent positions to see how those correlate. You'll, you're all familiar with the major vendor list. Of course, we are, that is, that will be something that will change in every draft you will see because we continue to revise it as we go, you know, constantly. So, but it's, it's really helpful, I think. So if you look it over and if you've got any questions, let me know. And then of course, when we do the bidding out stuff in January, we don't have to submit the budget book. You adopted in December, but that's not considered what you're adopting as the numbers. So we'll bring revised major vendor list back to you whenever we actually submit this for grading in March and it will include the current year bid, the people who won the bids in January. So there's that. Salaries, wages, and benefits, the allocation, as you guys know, we look at that every year. I looked at it, I ran it. Now, it was pre the last set of adjustments, but those really washed out to not be much different. So I don't, I don't anticipate any changes to that, but I just always like to point it out. The fleet pages, page 91 through 93, you know, we're trying real hard to provide you guys, and this is part of the CIP plan that he was talking about for our vehicles and equipment list. But when we get the whole thing flushed out, it will include facilities and buildings and all of those categories too. But that's a good start on the fleet. The fee schedules, I've updated parks fee schedules. Trish's is, she's planning to bring hers to you guys in October. And I've sent Ted his list of his today to look if any of those have changed. And then last but not least, you know, we're still trying to wrap up the Parkway. We've got the big lighting contract, that's page 97, everything that's been spent on that project. And there is the possibility, depending on the timing of everything, of something we have not budgeted to spend. But I didn't want to budget it because we don't know a definite number because it depends on how long that money sits in the bank and continues to earn interest, what the difference is between those contracts and what we end up paying. So that's on page 97. And I think that's all I had on my list to go over with you guys. Well, there were just a few little things, but I don't think it was really, it's just changes. So the next draft you receive for the November meeting will hopefully be a lot more locked down and that'll be closer to what you're going to actually be asked to, to adopt in the December meeting. So, did you guys have any questions?
All right, all right, .gov, new, new law. We're still.
Let's sit at the table.
Awesome, thank you for being here.
Yeah, we really just wanted to put this on the table to kind of get it in everybody's minds now. Come the end of May, we have to transition away from our .com to our .gov. So the two big things that will affect is our website and our emails. The website is pretty straightforward, we've already got the domain through DNT. So we are going to, instead of being cityofbryant.com, it'll be bryantar.gov. So it's pretty clean, pretty simple. It seems like the DNT website transition should be pretty smooth. Where we're going to run into our hiccups is our emails. And that's what Pinnacle IT has been helping me with. We're exploring several different routes with them, trying to figure out what it's going to take, what it's going to cost. We're deciding if we're going to stick, right now, we're using Google for all of our emails. Trying to figure out if we stick with that, if we go to Microsoft, which option's cheaper? Which option's more expensive? Either way though, it does look like it is going to be a more expensive project. It's not going, we're not going to be able to slide it cheap anywhere. So just kind of wanted to get that into everybody's brain. We're still working on numbers and still getting out exactly what it's going to cost. But we are looking and trying to figure out the, both the best option for the city and the cheapest option that we can get with, and still stay secure. Because right now, we've realized that we're operating on a business license, which is great for businesses, but we are a government. So we're going to have to step up some of our security to be better cyber secure and just have more control over our environment for emails. Any questions about the .gov transition?
I just want to add this website, see how much of it will translate. It sounds like it'll translate pretty easy.
Yeah, I think it'll just, it's pretty much just going to change the name when you type in to go to. I think DNT may also be doing a refresh of some things on the site. That's part of our contract, I think we refresh yearly with them. So that's just kind of a standard for them anyways. But other than just a general refresh and changing that, it'll be pretty easy. And as far as I'm aware, also you may be able to correct me on this if I'm saying something wrong. If somebody does still type in cityofbryant.com, we will still phone that domain for a little bit and it'll redirect them to bryantar.gov. I think we could do the same thing with emails too, just because we know that someone signed up a subscription or something like that and doesn't pay attention that we've changed emails. So that we shouldn't lose any service, we'll just transition. And we just have to have it done by the end of May. I passed my table.
All right, no other questions? Well, Jared, thanks everybody.